We're live.
Okay, call the meeting to order, the regular monthly meeting, Shenango County IDA, November nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Roll call.
Er, Corey.
Kaliai.
Here.
Oops, sorry.
You here? All set?
Yeah.
Okay. Paul's here. Paul's there too.
Woodford here.
Sorry.
Mission of the Shenango County IDA is the mission of Shenango County Investor Development Agency to drive economic growth by providing targeted incentives that strengthen tax base, support job creation, promote clean and affordable energy solutions for a more sustainable future. Items up for business, approval of the minutes, October fifteenth as well as October twenty ninth.
Big motion.
Full move. Corey seconds. It's Corey seconds, discussion. Hello?
Hello? Actually, sorry, discussion. Okay, I believe the twenty nine. That's wrong.
Correct, right?
We did take action, but now I cannot see that.
Oh, that is true.
So we just need to make an amendment to the minutes that we voted to approve the increasing contract to commerce Shenango.
Yes, actually, there was a couple of items.
Yes, there were, there were two that we approved the ability for RC to sign based upon the new, yeah, the administrative services agreement based upon the new percentages.
Correct.
And we agreed that the IDA would pay the portion of the SBA loan that we had outstanding going forward as well. That was the two resolutions. I'm agreeing to do the look back.
Correct.
The third resolution, we've got that number that you can discuss. We reached that point in executive session, I know what that look back number is, but those were the two, two that we had coming out of that section.
You'll hear that?
Yeah.
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 So, so the meeting minutes John will make of it, the meeting minutes will be approved based upon two amendments. The first amendment will be a resolution that was approved coming out of executive session, giving RC permission to sign the administrative services agreement based upon the percentages discussed. And also to include as part of that administrative services agreement, an SBA loan that was taken out by Homer Shenango. They agreed to share the percentages, the payment of that loan going forward based upon the same percentages agreed to with the administrative services.
So I believe both of those are in the packet on page seven.
That was when we met RC, we had an additional meeting this past month.
Okay, that's.
That's where we voted on the contract services agreement.
Five, six.
But I don't see where we, the RC signature.
Right.
Motion.
So we need that, we need the okay to see, we need to Google, so we'll have to come back and get it signed. So that's all we need, John, we just need two of those minutes. Then RC can sign those, basically cause those percentages, that's all.
Okay. Burn. So approval as amended?
The motion.
Motion.
Second.
Full seconds. So approval as amended, we'll vote.
Burn.
Corey.
Kaliai.
Paul's there.
Woodford I here. Sorry about that. Okay, financial report, October thirty one, John.
There, I'm at page eight. Get to the column there, just to get, to give you a couple of highlights. We head down on the October column there to the third number, the intra five. Just so you know, it's a little bit less than last year, at the end of last year, but we moved fifty thousand into kind of checking to handle bills and things of that nature. Going down to accounts, see, well, that difference there is strictly the Hybridge and the Pocket Solar adjustments we made and how the accounts of those being handled. So that's those adjustments there. Continuing on down, accounts payable, and we'll hit that in a minute there. And then, just an idea, the net activity balances, there, it's mostly a lot of the things that we've talked about through the year when we get the income statement here. Kind of follow that column through and find out why that looks like that, but our, our total fund balance is two point nine million, down from three point two four this year. So any questions on the, on that particular?
Questions for John so far?
Heading on to page nine. We are looking at our eight receivables, the first two have already been paid. Those are kind of the monthly maintenance and rent utilities, different county administrative expenses back and forth. We did bill all everything vagary and that has been paid as well, that is for the water sewer that they use, that has been paid already. And then you'll see the Pocket Solar will continue to move over until eventually in the ninety days there. That's the adjustment we need to account stable last time, so pretty straightforward, I'm not, any questions there? Next, page ten, accounts payable. Pretty straightforward here, bomb mooring, the home non-use fire alarms, multi pest control. Good there, we'll head on to page one. Kind of looking through here, saying in the October twenty five actual columns, second let him down, again, that is the combination that everything vagary, which is two hundred forty-three that we billed out along with the DCC and commerce utility expenses that we kind of built out. Trying to think what else series of interest, Patrick Services, you know, looks a little higher than budget, but there's three payrolls in October. The budget was kind of flat, just did take in account number payrolls, that's why it looks higher there. On the professional services, we did get a refund from the county on the grant application for one of our programs, and so that's where that got applied to that expense.
For the water district stuff.
Yeah. Heading on to page twelve. You can see these utilities, pretty much are, are we elevator renewal, that's where our gas goes, our telephone, our water, that's utilities. Maintenance was elevator renewal, pest control, lawn care. And the consulting engineering sees, you'll see that there, that is the early learning center. So we've got a couple of bills, when you guys go to pay bills, what you'll see, we'll talk about in a minute, you'll see two of them this month, one for forty-eight hundred. And it'll actually hit next month, it's in this check register you're looking at, will be twelve thousand dollars. And that's kind of the bid work, getting the bid prepared before that building's bought out. Those are kind of the highlights, any questions on financials?
Just the intra five account, just so you know, interest rates are obviously going down across the board, that also, the intra five interest is getting lower. However, I will state that it's still paying much better than a regular savings account or even a regular bank card bank.
And that's one of the years where we're down in the budget, you know, we just, it's still a good deal, like you said, Brian, it's just one of the ones where we're making a little bit less than we did three years ago.
We're gonna send out a due a poll, John, can you take an action or hold it? To do a working session on the budget, because we do have a budget, we do have a schedule between now and summer. Make sure we're tied off, so we won't go through that because we have two meetings in the executive session.
Though I will hand one out to you guys to take with you.
Yes, yeah. Just something to review in anticipation of that. So we'll have that, John, a great job of breaking that down, RC's now on the commerce side, as we've seen it. But I do want to make sure that also, also RC is probably at due a poll. I'd like to make, have that extend beyond the budget, and have it be a little bit of a working session around a couple of other projects. So what I ask you, because you and I have had, you and I have had some conversations. I'd like to be on the building project itself and try to have a, an understanding of where we are. So rather than trying to wrestle to the ground at what you think things are, I'm gonna ask us to put an interim.
Okay, makes sense. As far as John's financial reports, thirteen motions approved.
Motion.
Approved.
Second.
Need a seconds discussion. Vote.
Hello?
Bottom bird, I, sorry.
Corey, I.
Kaliai.
Crawford members.
Paul's there.
Woodford I here. Bills and invoices, John just went over several of those, do you want to add, John?
Yeah, the only other one of note was NICEG, John and I had lots of fun with NICEG this last couple of weeks. So we mailed them a check, they said they never got it, so we had to go and jump through, run to Oney, I cut another check, paid them, put a stop payment on the check. They're, they're just tough to work with, but we're all, we're all good. And they sent a henchman here to say we're in charge of services, even though we mailed all the checks. So we, we took care of all that, and that was good, but we did pay two late payment fees and a, and I had to stop payment on the check because I didn't want them to cash the check that they said they didn't get because we placed the check. And then they charged us a fee for stopping payment on the check that we had told them we were stopping payment on, so. And I called and tried to get credits and they really had zero appetite to have this conversation.
Look.
So it wasn't a lot, like thirty bucks, just so you guys know.
Any reason why you wouldn't have electronic payments, do away with the mailing and the stamping?
Yeah, I. Personally, I'm not.
Okay.
Not in the old school. Especially with twenty dollars. From a banking standpoint, it is the safest way to pay.
We do pay.
Division act. So there's a potential that somebody stole that check. That's why it never got there. Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Now they're bleached and somebody else is cashing the check.
So one of the things I'm doing is I'm upgrading all the checks to the latest security features, which makes them, in theory, harder to bleach, harder to copy, harder to do that, so I am upgrading those, that's one thing, so I have a conversation, so you could have done something like that.
So we all have those charges in there, so we just recommend that you pay everything electronically, you can't pay electronically for safety.
Yeah, we would have to take a whole look at our accounting system.
We really channel the ways because we're not able to transfer things that we've got going on, where our accounts, money coming, money going out. Find a really good mapping of that employee, and that's something we couldn't, Brian, that would be a problem.
Motion to approve bills and invoices.
Motion.
Move.
Again.
Full seconds, discussion. Vote.
Corey, I.
Kaliai. Crawford. Paul's there.
Woodford I here. Pilot updates.
Pilot updates, I don't have a whole lot of updates here on this list, first on there is Norbit Solar Farms, that still remains like standstill. Currently, I don't have any news to share on that one.
The feelings of that going forward, Tyler, likelihood?
I mean, fifty fifty, because I just don't have any.
Yeah. And we didn't make any of that expectation up to our.
Exactly. Paying solar, we discussed it the last time we met, they have come back into play rather aggressively, looking to close by the end of the year, we have collected enough information. Our attorneys have all the information they need in order to generate closing docs. They'll in turn send that to their attorneys and it's early up in Irving, and see how quickly that can happen, so everything's moving forward with them. Like I said, we'll provide by the end of the year, if not, they're definitely in the first quarter of next year, we'll have a closing date for that. Principal Holdings Group, the pilot was put on pause in order for them to close on the building itself, they did close at the end of October. They held a groundbreaking ceremony, there is construction fencing, and they are to work over there, which is awesome, however, we have not progressed any further on the pilot closing, but we're.
Where, where, what stage is that, and what's?
That is still with Principal's attorneys.
Okay, so Tom Clifford is on here, and we will follow up if he needs to, but again, they ought to, Eric, somebody ought to convey. I'm not sure when Shelley will trigger next year's taxes, but, but it'll come right away, right? And it's okay now because the first year of the pilot is the same assessment, so they'll have that baked in there, right? But if they don't get it by the second year, when they start construction, she's gonna make changes, right? So that thing ought to get moving before we gotta go backwards and ask her for forgiveness. Yeah. Because she's gonna be real fond of that. Exactly. I know she won't. So she won't go backwards, so just make sure they know.
Yeah, we'll keep the, we'll keep the pulse on that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what's going on with that.
It's just, it just said, it's, their attorney needs to review the documents to send back to ours, so.
Which is all in there. Everybody knows it's not our deadline, it's gonna be, that building sold now, company, no IDA, Commerce Shenango, DCC, we're out of that skin, so.
Yep. Hybridge Wind, last month, we did vote to adopt the amendment to the pilot. Since then, I have gotten a call from Hybridge Wind, they are in the process of selling to the new company, which is comical, yes, Brian. That is expected to close next April, I believe the gentleman told me, is a green energy company based out of Aldini that is purchasing it. I don't have a whole lot of information, I was told that the new company is aware of the pilot amendment and the plans and situation with us, and everything is, is fine. However, I don't have concrete information on any of that.
But is that new company Liberty?
Yes, Liberty, someone my kid works for, yep. Uh. So we'll continue to get in some information from them, but that's just a recent update in the last probably two weeks.
When you have a change of ownership, what does that actually do to the timeline? I mean, there's a sunset when federal tax breaks and things on these projects.
Yeah, they got a, the sort of.
Will it hold anything up with that transfer?
I would think it would hold it up, yeah, to some extent.
Do you have to go back and redo your paperwork, you know, is there, is there a process that you have to?
There isn't any, because we've had several solar pilots that we currently have that have transferred ownership more than once, and it's just a matter of knowing who to contact.
We had a very similar conversation with Albigin, Albigin wants a transfer.
Yeah.
All it really is, Mike, is to say, they're gonna come in, we'll have to vote on it, go back with this new company, we'll have to come in and make a presentation. We'll have to, you all have to say, yes, we believe this is a good company, we believe they'll uphold the standard to the contract, and we reassign that contract to them.
For the application remains the same, you just changed it.
Everything, the terms remain the same, they're not asking you to put anything there.
We, we ought to think about.
Yes.
These, these changes seem to create a lot of tumult, churn.
They do.
In here, right? So we ought to think about some sort of like change fee, like it's great that they want to keep freely assigning, you know, these to other, you know, owners or managers of the project, but.
Creates work for us.
It's great and a lot of churn.
Yeah.
So we ought to think about working into our agreement somehow, you know.
Transfer fee or something.
Yeah, some sort of fee that in addition to, you know, they pay, okay, they pay something upfront, they pay pilot payments, but something to cover our administrative costs for dealing with this cha-cha, because, you know, in the short time I've been on here, we seem to spin our wheels quite a bit because these companies are.
Especially, especially when it's a green entity.
And that's the whole point on why we did the contract, because we spent so much time, but you're, you're correct, we should just pay cost to people who are causing it, they pay the attorney's fees. Tom Clifford, I assume you heard that, right? So can you please take a look at our pilot agreements? And, and one of the things that we do want to do is, and again, John Axel's asked for, is try to standardize like a, a format to say, well, we're gonna have Barb help track. What are the terms of these pilots, because everything is a little bit different when it comes to each of these. But, but Tom, we need to build in some language that says, if a contract is changed or is transferred, I don't know what the fee should be, but I'd love some recommendation from you as to that language and how much we ought to charge. You're muted, but I'm gonna just take that as agreement.
And we do currently have, there is language in our agreement that if they do transfer ownership, they do need to make us, and that's the biggest holdup with Norbit Solar Farms right now, is their attorney, they don't want to have to notify us if they do transfer ownership, because it is a common thing within green energy companies to do that. They don't feel like they should come back to this IDA and pitch a new company, they should just be able to do that. So we do have some strongholds built into it already, just not, there's no fee associated with it, so that's a good, that's a good thought.
And yeah, the reason to get that payment stream document a little standard or format is that seems to be a bone of contention. They don't always understand what they're, what they're getting when they transfer, and then we gotta start trying to explain to them, yes, you really do owe this money, so getting that cleared up and a little more straightforward would be helpful.
Well, I think they should be, they're, they're obligated to come, at least let us know what the new project, that the new owners can stay within the scope of the approved project.
Yes.
I mean, we, we can pull their pilot anytime we feel like it, honestly, when it comes down to it, for cause, right? And so I, you know, I think making them understand that we need to check some balance. By regulation, that the scope of the project is not changing, we're gonna need, you know, all the contact information of the new owner, so, yeah, they have to, and we just call.
And I think, yeah, I think from that standpoint, they agree, it's the, I think the way it's currently written is that we need to.
Approve it, approve it.
They don't want to just notify Brian of all the information, they don't want to take in time all the details. Our requirement says we have to approve you. And, and again, we don't have to spend too much time because it's already in there, we're asking to put a fee in there, but we will do some work with other IDAs and speak to them, like, what is the language that you have? They turn, right, so we'll try to benchmark, we'll be sick when the group wants, and see how they handle these types of things, and that'll inform us, but I, I, we've got protection right now.
Yeah.
Where we have to approve it. We have companies asking us, is that required for you to approve it, or could we just conform you according to? You can always violate the contract or avoid the contract, if we violate whatever requirements you have based on that transfer, I'm not comfortable saying we shouldn't approve it because these companies got to dissipate, plus you don't have the opportunity without some approval to be able to put the information that John Axel's describing, say, here's what you're signing up for with the transfer, we want to have a dialogue around that before we say, okay. But we'll wrestle back to the ground, come back, right now, we don't need to check anything except for, is there a way to add a fee to protect some kind of assignment, any transfer or whatever that calls.
Sounds good, we'll, we'll honor that later. General business.
Old business, early learning center, that's why I want, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that, we're moving forward, that, kind of, I'm assuming we're gonna get ready to go out for a general contractor if you have this month, right? That's the idea that.
Yeah, the idea is to have a general contractor pick by the end of the year.
By the end of this year, we'll have a general contractor. I, I would like to put together a building committee to talk about this, there's going to be lots of things that we have to consider, especially like what do we do with this building upstairs versus what's going on down there, do we try to sink tie, which we probably should, things that are going down with air conditioning units and so on and so forth, they're gonna use splits, we have aging units out here, do we want to reconsider that now as part of this whole remodel? I don't want to answer those questions by myself, so what I'd like to do is when we get back together for that budget conversation, talk about who should be on the building committee, how regularly we should meet, what we should do. Because one of the things that I want to discuss in that meeting as well is you guys tasked us with finding out how to finance that, and do we do a bond or so on and so forth? What we found, which goes, so, to us, IDAs don't receive bonds, they issue bonds. And the IDAs that we've talked to, with the group ended, Kirk kind of said, they, they don't finance projects, they literally go through county, work with the county, because we're an agent of the county in IDA, and they use the surplus that the county has, and says, hey, listen, you've got a million dollars, you put this money to work, and when the county, the state pays us back, we pay the county back. I've gotta go make that presentation, Jeff, I have this, Jeff, the bill, they'll have to talk about, I'm gonna put it in front of, I'm gonna put it in front of PD this week when we cancel the meeting, but John Pieceick was like, why would an IDA ever incur interest on money when the county, that's, the county wants that? And Bill Crane has actually said that before, if we have projects like that, that makes sense, just, we have to go and talk, that's very, it makes sense, right, Jeff? So I'll come more to that, but I want to put a building committee together to talk about, how can we make sure we do all these things the right way to get reimbursed? What's the process? What can we do up here that we should start to do now so we're not too distracted, things like that, RC.
Anybody interested in building? How many, who, who are you?
I'd like for you, and I'd like it, I'd like probably like five, I'd like to get one from the place, or like, maybe, maybe five, six, not that, but that would be voting, RC, so we'll bring people in as we want to, certainly I would want you to be on that.
Okay.
And, and anybody else, I would like to be at least consulted on that as well, but I think we can share vastly on that from the place, right? And then to my relative, I mean, you know, an attorney would probably make some sense to have on there, right? So, I mean.
So with, with the, with the. The IDA members, maybe three of the IDAs?
That'd be great.
And maybe we can pick a couple as, as we move on.
I bring in Sharon, Sharon, me, you, that'd be five of us, right? There you go, John in, Axel. We have, and Jeff in, right, so we bring, bring them in, right, so we say, okay, but, but the five of us will be responsible for that, right? I'll speak to Sharon, that would make sense.
Is it cool with anybody, everybody?
I mean, obviously we'll put Tyler in there. Sure, absolutely, you need to go. I'm just saying, who's taking responsibility after all? You're looking, I'm just waiting for you to say something.
I was gonna say, are you about to hear that?
I guess I'll lay a load here, but if I did bring something to the table, I would do it.
Along the lines of the early learning center, just a quick question, we've got a lot of irons in our, in our fire today, but where are we at? Have we seen a grant agreement yet from anybody?
We have an agreement, I think we've seen, just nothing that's been.
From the, the grantor?
Yes.
State of the arts?
Yes.
Okay. And as it's, and the grantor, who, who's contracting with the, the granting agency?
City is.
So we should post Eric on that building committee as well, we should have a city.
And then we'll have an agreement between, a third party agreement with the city.
Okay.
That's six people.
So some recipient agrees with us, I'm sorry.
Eric, could, would you suggest anybody besides yourself to be on that building committee?
Ah, no.
You can go, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll put that meeting together, I know what that one is, that we might, we might do that as a, we'll have our budget meeting, and then I'll have a separate building committee meeting the same day, so again, we'll have to come more than one time, but.
Okay, so that's, that's East Main Street, how about?
Chobani has, Tyler did a very good job, got approval from Max Finberg, who's their government liaison, sent the letter saying that Chobani is extremely supportive of our water district program, our, our study that we're going on, which we sent to the state, which is very helpful, and just get that grant approved, so we're excited about that. Everything is indicating that we can continue to move forward, knock that thing down, and potentially convey it to.
I don't know. They're the sad builders, all them.
Yeah, so it'd be cool, it'd be cool. It'd be a great project for us to be able to. So that's moving forward, kind of bakery building, you guys know that, that was sold, Mr. Beers purchased that building, like, good chick there now. She's got some ideas that she'd like to do there, so all those things are getting cleaned up, it's pretty well. I said, pro business.
Okay. Coming events, got a lot of irons in the fire there as well.
This week, Thursday, if anybody's got time, stop over at the Wides, cool events, getting event, we'll celebrate the fact that, you know, we all have jobs and we can know where our next meal is coming from, there's a lot of people right now in our community that can't, so we ask people to bring a donation to the local food banks, and we'll have a little music, it's, it's a really nice event. But MBT does break breakfast for the bank, or I think it's.
No, Brandon.
Brandon, oh, okay, well, it'll be even more fun than we have. And then you see, our MBT holiday, external hands alcohol, text, now, because that's what we're gonna introduce to new leadership Shenango class as well, so it's a great event to interview some of those people, so we've got some cool things on that. That's it. Okay, before we go into the executive session, RC, we do have some guests here, and the things that we're gonna talk about in the executive session, as you can see them there, first off, the contract is the Albigin pilot, well, that is out the, Albigin location, and I'll do a terrible job in more than, like, wherever I make a mistake. The Albigin location has been purchased by a domestic. Our attorney's on, I just want to mention that you're on the. Oh, yeah, our attorney, Charles, also on there, our attorney.
We were on you, we've been on you the time.
You guys can hear us now, right, Tom?
That's true.
Yeah, yeah. Was it that child new or?
No, there was no, no attention, so it was operator, operator error, thank you so much. But before we break into executive sessions, yeah, no one happens.
This video is recorded on YouTube, so you guys can catch up if you want to, I, I didn't, I didn't know I had it on mute, so you can find it live on our website, on our YouTube channel.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk.
I'll, I'll.
We'll follow, we'll, we'll go back.
Yeah.
But what we did want to talk about before we break into these topics was the fact that, yeah, Albigin location has been sold, and as part of that sale, we have, we received a letter from Harris Beetment on behalf of the potentially new owners, asking us to assign the current pilot to them and to provide them with a mortgage recording tax exemption. And so that, that's the process that we would want to go into the executive session and talk about because of the assignment of the contract. I do want to ask if they have any input, and I also, RC, would like to articulate the process, because it's a thirty, up to thirty-seven million dollar mortgage tax exemption, that's our purchase price, so that exemption, one percent, that it's more than a hundred thousand dollars, so I believe we have to do a public hearing, so people are asking for timing of events, so the way I think it, let me now, let these guys correct me, but when I have this conversation, assuming that we, the IDA makes some decision around getting input from, from the public, we'd have to schedule that, probably before we start, get that thing scheduled for a public hearing. So you're in the middle of December, by the time we get that done, so we're probably looking February to get that over, in reality, right? And I know that, I'm trying to figure out here, what you guys need from a purchase standpoint, or behind us, but I just, there's a process that we have to follow, I'm trying to explain that to people, that's pending in that estate. So in order for us to approve this, we're gonna need to go through an entire process of that, where we ask for public opinion, and public hearing, and so on and so forth. So, but I'd be happy if your input, I've received groups of his feelings about the sale, this is what this meeting.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, so it's, it's two, this is two, right, so we have the sale of Albigin, and it is very positive for us. So we have the sale of Albigin, and it is very, uh, positive for us, right? Uh, if you guys all know, or you're just, we had a lot of learnings out of COVID. And, uh, with, uh, generic pharmaceuticals and where they were manufactured and trying to get them back in the States. And we ran, you know, we, we were out of key pharmaceuticals for, for many people there. And now also with the tariffs, right? There's a lot of interest in bringing back pharmaceuticals into the US. So that positions us very well, which is why we were, this is such positive news for us here, uh, at the site in Norwich. Um, and with that, we are also, with the correspondence that we sent and, and sell kind of over high level there. As, as many of you know, back in two thousand and sixteen, we entered into a sale leaseback, uh, transaction with Angela Gordon. Um, and since then, now, just where we are to date, we intend to repurchase the property from Angela Gordon, which is part of what Sal was mentioning earlier with the, um, some of the, uh, subleases, right? So currently what happens is the parcels, um, that are leased to Angela Gordon, they then sublease to Norwich, right? Um, and we're requesting that that lease be converted back to just Norwich upon, you know, the, the purchase there. And in addition to that, we have the pilot agreement, and we'd also like that reverted back to Norwich versus to Angela Gordon, should this also look forward. And then, uh, with regards to the, uh, exemption on the mortgage recording tax, we are requesting that to help preserve, uh, working capital. Uh, as well to allow continued facility improvements and, uh, workforce development. So we spend a lot of the cost for pharmaceutical manufacturing is, is pretty substantial with just your facilities and your needs for your facilities, your equipment, your air filtration. Every time we bring in a new product, uh, it's, it's pretty costly and we'd like to continue to try to grow there. So we are asking for that exemption. Um, and then with the purchase of, uh, the property back from Angela Gordon, it really opens up the door for us for additional potential expansion, uh, here at the site. And, um, you know, now currently we are, we absolutely have had an influx of government requests on what our capabilities are. Are we willing to, you know, move forward in a different directions, et cetera? So there's absolutely a lot of positive for a generic pharmaceutical request at this point.
You view it as a positive thing?
Absolutely.
For the future of the community, for the future of your organization, for the future of your.
Absolutely, yes.
I'm a little lost, who, who's gonna own it now?
Norwich Pharmaceuticals.
Good, how many employees are there now?
We have about three hundred and twenty, um, employees. We're usually around three seventeen plus or minus five. And then we also have a pool of temps that fluctuate anywhere from five to fifteen at any given time.
Thank you. Got a question on that, are you, are you strictly a contract manufacturer or do you have your own, uh?
We have our own generic, yeah, our Albigin products, our own generic products, but we also have the, uh, we have, uh, key third parties that we contract.
Okay.
Any more questions for anybody from Albigin and/or for their attorney?
Yeah, can I, can I just weigh in briefly? This is, uh, Chip Russell from Harris Beach, Murtha. Um, you know, I, I understand and appreciate the, um, scheduling issues you have relative to public meetings and so forth. Uh, we may be, uh, proceeding, uh, fairly quickly if things go in a particular direction. Uh, if that's the case, uh, I guess what we would like to understand is, uh, we will need to obviously get the various benefits. Uh, at least, you know, the, um, leases and the pilot agreement was signed. As you're probably well aware, the pilot is to run out, I believe, at the end of next year. Uh, we're not asking for an extension of that at this time. Um, we, we understand and appreciate the fifty-year relationship that we've had with the agency. Uh, I think it's actually forty-nine years. Um, and, and certainly if, if we, if we do something, uh, more substantial, other than just repurchase the property, we will probably come back to talk to you, um, folks about that. Um, but in the meantime, uh, we're not here to ask for an extension of the, uh, tax, uh, abatement benefits on real property taxes. Uh, that will just run its course for the time being. Uh, and the only other, uh, thing that we will need, um, assuming we move forward quicker than, you know, waiting for the mortgage recording tax exemption, which I'm just not sure we're there yet, or it's a possibility. Uh, we would also need the IDA just to sign off on the mortgages themselves. The mortgages, unlike most circumstances, uh, this is not purchase money financing, we're not borrowing money to, um, to purchase the plant. But however, our, uh, our clients, um, lenders, uh, require that every time they purchase an asset of this size, they do have to put a mortgage on it. And so, uh, it's a negligible benefit to us, uh, it's only beneficial to the lender. And, uh, you know, it, that's why we would prefer to have the mortgage recording tax exemption, because it's, it's not really doing much, uh, for the company per se. Um, it's, it's just really a, a function of our credit agreements that we have to, um, have a, a mortgage put out to any, any asset this size. Hopefully that, that gives you a better rationale for why we, we have to get this. And so if, if we're moving faster and we will find out that in the next couple of weeks here, um, we may just come back and ask, uh, for an execution of the mortgage to subject the IDA's interest to the lien of the mortgage. Uh, not asking for mortgage according to expectations, that's an, that's a possibility, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
Yeah, we could, we could, we'll have that conversation and let you know what that process might be after we get into these discussions.
Yeah, thank you, Stan, appreciate it.
Questions for anybody else?
Good.
Entertained motion, wanting executive session, wanted to, to contract negotiations. So, Corey, I'll say. I'll summon anybody for the fourth discussion.
Paper?
I, I.